Well, I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And I'm presuming, since we've got four here and one not expected, that there are no requests for remote attendance.
Correct.
Okay. And our next item of business is to accept the agenda or else to modify it?
I move that we accept the agenda. Second.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries unanimously. And we're now here to public comment. Is there anybody from the public wanting to address the board?
See any?
They all have their TV sets now.
Seeing none, then we'll move on to new staff introductions, and there aren't any of those either.
Nope, did them in the previous months.
Okay. Then we can move on to the Uptack Report, and it was a written report in our board packets. And I don't see Mr. Diggs here tonight, so were there any comments, questions, whatever, regarding the Uptack Report?
No, it was a good meeting. Lots of people there.
Good discussion.
Yeah, yeah. It was quite lovely.
Alrighty, then that brings us to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda for this evening, our approval of the minutes from the November 7th study session and the November 14th regular board meeting, the receipt of our three departmental reports, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. So it's the privilege of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wanting to remove anything from this list?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Yeah.
Maybe do more than that?
And in an omnibus, and the matters on it in an omnibus fashion?
I'd take that, yes.
I'll second that.
That's moved and seconded, and under the rules of the consent agenda, at this point there is to be no further discussion. We should hold a roll call vote on this, beginning at the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with the four commissioners present voting. So that moves us on then to reports, and first up are our financial reports.
Hello, everyone. Great to see you again this month. And tonight I'll be talking to you about the performance of the Urbana Park District for the month of November. The first report that I'll be discussing tonight is called the Fund Balance Report. And this report is a report that shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the seven months ending November 30th, 2017. The first page of this report we call Sum 1. It is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues for this period were $8,035,000, which was an increase of $343,000 since October. $6,615,000 of our revenues were property taxes, and we've received our final property tax dispersment for levy year 2016. There's still a lingering dispersment or two that comes for U of I or Airport or something, but the actual levy year 2016 receipts have all been received. So we've received like 99 point something percent of all the taxes that were budgeted. Expenditures for this period were $4,440,000, which is a change of $393 since October. And we have a surplus after seven months. And this means that there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $3,595,000. And net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after seven months of $3,595,000.
And the question about the replacement?
Can you say, what's your question? Oh, sure.
The corporate replacement tax, is that, so it should be? Is that pacing?
Personal property, what page are you on? Page one?
Some one.
The top of the section.
The $84,505,000, $84,505, yeah, that's tracking. We get those payments every other month, and so they start coming at the beginning of the year, and then they just kind of come every other month, and we'll get that $140,000 and then some. The larger payments tend to come in the spring. So.
Weird. Unless somebody lifts them up. Isn't that one of the things that they've tried to sweep?
I think they've talked about trying to get rid of it totally.
Oh, not even.
But it's still holding on.
Yeah.
We hope.
That would be a sweep.
That would be a sweep. That is crap. Permanent sweep.
Be a knockout with a broom.
Yeah, exactly. It's important to us.
Yeah. The second page of this report is only the Capital Improvements Fund. At this point in the year, we've received revenues of $174,000, and we have expenditures of $482. That means there's a deficit of $308,000, and a decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $308,000. But just a week after the end of this month, on December 5th, the end of this month that I'm talking about, on December 5th, we received our bond proceeds. So that is, they're all secured in our Chase Savings Account. So we received $710,000 from Commerce Bank, who won the bond sale back last month that you all approved. And that is all settled now and ready for spending in the 2018 capital budget. So that's all there is to that for now.
Would life be any easier if these things were more in sync? Or does it not matter?
It doesn't matter. You mean as far as like fiscal year versus calendar year?
Right, and how we get, when the bond funds come in, because that doesn't really tally with either one, and?
Yeah, it's not the bigger deal, because the, we want the bond funds to come before the capital year starts, because you want to have those funds available for spending. So that's, we time that purposefully to be received in December, so that by January 1, we're ready to start spending.
Gotcha.
So that part of it is fine. You know, I don't know what other districts do, if they align their capital years and their fiscal years, but I mean ultimately you have your capital budgets to spend all the way through versus your fiscal year that kind of resets each year. So they're just kind of different animals.
Okay, and as long as it's not more work for you, then it's, okay, that was my concern.
And lastly, on page three, I'd just like to point out that if for some reason the district ended today, we would have net ending fund balance for the entire district on the bottom of page three of $9,722,000. So at this point in the year, we've received a lot more revenues than we have the expenditures that will catch up towards the end of this year. So we're not budgeting to have that type of an increase to our fund balance, so hopefully we'll survive to spend the rest out. And that's all I have for the Fund Balance Report. Following that are the summary reports for the individual working funds, General, Recreation, Museum, and the Indoor Pool Fund. If you don't have any questions about that, I'll talk about the Budget Analysis with History Report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same seven-month period of the current year and the prior three years. So that's 58%, so that's a number you could use in the report to compare for those things that run ratably. And so you can see the first kind of half of page one, we've received 99% of all of our tax revenues that we were expecting. And I was going to see, Bob, you kind of put me on the spot about the corporate personal replacement tax monies, but you can see, if you look at that line, it's the fourth line down. So we've received $84,000, and you can see the same time last year, we'd received 74. The year before that, we'd received 84. The year before that, we'd received 75. So that's tracking. It's tracking about where it's supposed to be right now. So if you move to page two on this report, in the middle of the page, revenue, total revenues and transfers in for this seven-month period were $9,545,000. And also, oh, I also wanted to point out, sorry to make you flip-flop pages again, but back on page one, I just wanted to point out, I've done about half of our real major fund transfers in November. So the $920,000 that was a transfer from the Recreation Fund is now finished, and the $320,000 transfer that's from the Museum Fund to the General Fund is now finished as well. And that, the purpose of doing those, there's a timing to do those in November, because we use a large portion of those transfers to fund the bond payments that we make in December on the big bonds, which is also another agenda item tonight for the abatement ordinances, so I can talk about this again. So we make these transfers from General and Recreation into the General Fund. Some of those monies stay there to support administration. And then we do a large transfer from the General to the Bond Fund in December that actually funds the bond payments for the two large bonds that we committed to taxpayers for paying from alternate revenue sources. So those alternate revenue sources are these other fund levies versus the Bond Fund levy, which is why we abate it. So there's a timing for why I do the Recreation and Museum Fund in November, and then the General to Bond transfer in December. And that's because when our rating industry standard impores, when they call us, they do a rate review every two to three years. They want to see that we have the money to make our bond payments at the end of November in our coffers, so they don't want us to have already transferred it into the Bond Fund. They want to see that we have it in our alternate revenue sources, which is our General, our Recreation, and our Museum. So we can transfer among those three, but they don't want us to have it transferred into the Bond Fund yet, because that would be premature. So that's something that Dottie helped work out, how these transfers work and the timing of all this, so she trained me on how to make sure I do that right. So you'll see, when I do the same report next month, you'll see the next half of that, which is the 1 point, it's $1,700,000 and some change that gets transferred from General to Bond. And we've already done it now, because the bond payments were paid this week, so that's kind of all coming, coming up, so. Moving on. On page, well, I kind of mentioned last month, just under the expenditure section, all the way from salaries through the end, we're tracking pretty much better than the prior three years in most of the sections. The only section that's really over is the miscellaneous section, and I said this last month, but it's because we transferred the $50,000 green gift to the foundation, so that wasn't a budgeted transfer. So at least right now, it looks like we're over budget. But in the end, in April, we'll do a revision to the Budget and Appropriation ordinance to correct that, but during this time period between now and April, it'll look like it's over budget. So let's see, where was I? But other than that, I think expenditure-wise, we're doing quite well. So expenditures, on the bottom of page three now, you can see that total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $6,259,000, with a surplus at the end of November of $3,287,000. And the dispersments to other funds is the flip side of the transfers side of revenue. So you'll see that General, or the Recreation and Museum Fund transfers out, and then, or transfers in to General, and then the other side dispersments to other funds is the expense side of it. So those two cancel each other out. And so we'll move on now to the Treasurer's Report. The Treasurer's Report is the amount of cash that the district has on one day, November 30th, 2017. All 24 of our funds are listed with where the cash is invested, for a grand total of Page two.
A quick question about the Urbana Indoor Pool.
Uh huh.
Is that, what's the $200 for? The cash on hand?
Cash on hand.
Oh, that's the petty cash they keep in the cash drawer for transactions. So they just, they have a $200 cash drawer there that, when people come into the door and pay their admission fees, that's how they make change.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And you can see we have petty cash funds in some of the other funds as well, depending on what the needs are of each department. Good question. Moving on to page two, the first section here at the top lists investments that we have with various institutions. And so of that $11,443,000, $8,668,000 is out in investments. When I was speaking about this report last month, there was almost $2 million more in investments in this, than there are this month, and that's because our Treasurer, Dick Percival, came in and transferred $2 million out of Chase Savings into Chase Operating to get ready for those bond payments in December, because we made those payments this week. So we went ahead and transferred the money from our savings account into our checking account, so that we were ready to write the checks the first week of December, when they were, they're due the 15th, but we always get them paid when, before they're due, so that if there's any issue, then we have time to correct it.
Those must be extra-long checks to write all those numbers. We really, I have trouble writing a, you know, medium-sized check in my.
Well, our bond payments, we do via ACH.
Ah, okay.
But they still come out of our checking account.
Oh, okay.
So we pay those electronically. Yeah.
Right.
But Dick really did write a $2 million checks. $2,000,000.
That would feel really weird, wouldn't it?
And the bond payments are only about 1.5 million, but we regularly transfer money out of our savings account as those property tax dollars come into it to fund our operations. So that was just a regular transfer plus bonds. I don't have any changes to the inter-fund loan section of this report, and I probably won't for a while, so we can move on to the dispersment section on the last page. And this final section lists dispersments, vendor payments match the paid accounts payable report in the consent agenda, and total dispersments of funds for November were $425,000.
I move we accept the Treasurer's Report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further conversation, excuse me, discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries unanimously.
Now I'll touch briefly on the supplemental report of cash. This is the same report, this has the same information as the Treasurer's Report, the front page, but it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name. So the expected uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. So of the $11,443,000 available, $1,268,000 is restricted obligations, which leaves $10,175,000 available as spendable cash. And lastly, I'll touch on the areas of activity in the capital budgets. And so next, this is the last month that you'll see the oldest capital budget, because I only present the most current three to commissioners, because that's where most of the activity is. And next month, you'll start seeing the 2018, 2017, 2016, but for now, you still have the older ones. So in the 2017 budget, revenues were received from Champagne Park District for reimbursement of UPD ADA capital expenses. And expenditures occurred on tributes, reforestation in Crystal Lake Park that was funded by a gift from Janice Kimpel, which was given to the foundation. A snowplow attachment was purchased out of vehicles and equipment, and the final payments were made towards the Larson Park Tennis Court construction, down in the contingency section. In the 2016 capital budget, revenues were also received in this budget for CPD reimbursement of UPD CUS ADA expenses. And expenditures occurred on memorials, construction crew projects, and reforestation in Crystal Lake Park. And the 2015 capital budget only had one expenditure, and it was towards the Bioswales project. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Could I interrupt with one quick question? This shows the 2015 budget's still having $14,000. Is that just going to be rolled into one of the other budgets?
No, we actually maintain these until they're fully spent out. And so we do spend our bond proceeds within three years, but the remaining amounts in these budgets are donations or other types of revenue. So we don't really have a restriction on having to spend them in a certain amount of time, so sometimes these can go on for some time. And we really get pressured to spend them when we're coming up on the 910X number that we need to reuse for the next year. So we have about nine years before, it really gets urgent to spend these out, but we just present the most three recent years. The other ones, we re-review every month at our capital projects meeting to make sure we're still tracking on the spending on those.
Do you have a sense of how much there is, just?
There's not very much. So this budget, this budget has 14,000 remaining to be spent, but I think there might only be, the 2013 doesn't even have any left, so I think this is, no, this is the, the 2014 does have something, but it's very small. It's just some memorials money, it's like $4,000. And we're working on spending that on a boulder and placket, and bucks on a boulder and placket at Meadowbrook. So we do try to track those very carefully and make sure we spend every dollar.
Yes.
I'm happy to bring all of them to you if you'd like. It's just a matter of saving paper, I think.
We're just curious. We're just curious.
Okay. Derek touched base on the Beanford Project a little bit at the study session, but I'll note again that the demo work is complete there. We did approve some additional work to be done along the High Cross Road, clearing about 100 feet to 150 feet on each side of the drive there. It's opened it up and really just providing a safe entry and exit for our staff. Derek had talked with the township supervisor, who's interested in further clearing that section along High Cross Road. So in the coming weeks, there's still a little bit of work to be done at the site. Our staff will work to clear off some, as much honeysuckle as they can get along the road, and whatever fencing is left, and then the township has agreed to haul away all of the material for us.
Yay.
Wouldn't say as much honeysuckle as we can get up the road, because there's a lot there. We want to get, that's called, it's in the fence.
Oh, sure.
Make two passes with our Fecon unit. We think that'll give a good clearance, and the material we pull up from the fence is what the township will take away for us.
Great, good.
The Saline Rock Riffle Project, I've been updating on. Each month, we've, we're notified by IDNR that the permitting process is still not complete. The Army Corps of Engineers is experiencing higher volumes of permitting, permits than usual, so they're anticipating work to begin in January at this point. So I'll keep updating as we get more information on that.
Hey, you want to be waiting out there in January.
Yeah, great time of year, fish won't bite.
We've had a few interpretation signs installed last week, kind of wrapping up that interpretation project. You'll remember previously, we had the Bioswales interpretive sign, and we have some signs installed for the Prairie Overlook. Last week, the kiosk signs, the two signs out by the Nature Center were installed, and then the Douglas Creek interpretive sign was installed in Meadowbrook Park.
Great.
We have a draft pool pack RFQ. It's currently with the school district. The pool management team, Tim, Derek, and Katie are working to finalize that document, and we hope to have that out first week of January. Our timeline's calling for construction to be around the usual closure of UIAC with an additional week for construction. And that, so it'll be the end of July, first of August.
Hope.
Yeah.
We have an idea of what the usual fabrication time is, but we also have an idea what the unusual fabrication time is. So if they just get a bunch of orders, we may be pushing it. But this is a planned replacement. We've been losing coolant. I've had two major leaks, and the coolant that it uses is no longer commercially available, commercially fabricated. You can still find places that have some reserves of it, but the price is going up with every repair. And we just had a new repair, another $6,000 repair, so it's just, it's near the end of its useful life. And the audit that we had done back in 2012, this is more recent than that, 2015, said that this would be about the time we need to replace it.
So the new one is, is it drastically different, or same kind of footprint?
Well, this RFQ will help us find that out. We'll have engineers that will design it for us, and so we're requesting qualifications from different engineering companies that will look at it. It may not be a pool vacuum, it could be a different manufacturer.
So it's not like buying a new refrigerator, that you just plunk in where the old one was? You could have something really drastically, I mean, not drastically different, but a different footprint, yeah.
Just remember, the process we're trying to prevent is the whole, when we had the fire, and we were waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for new unit to be built. So we're trying to be on top of that, and we're trying to plan accordingly, but some of it's out of our control. We did add, make it three weeks of a shutdown instead of two, trying to make sure we can get it installed, but fingers crossed it happens on time. We will be communicating with members, and they'll be, have the ability to go to Crystal Lake when the indoor is shut down, just like we do every shutdown. But we will be sure to let them know that this is our expected shutdown. It may last longer.
Right.
If the unit isn't on time. Once you take the unit out, you're pretty much in it until the end.
I would imagine that since it's on the roof, the footprint doesn't really matter that much. If it's a little bigger, a little smaller, it's not like you can take out part of a cabinet.
Because there is a support structure that holds it up there, and so.
It's to fit the support structure.
Is it the size of a semi-trailer? Is that what I'm thinking?
Like the required crane, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We talked with GHR about, you know, the idea of, could we put a second unit on now? Because you may recall, at one point, there was plans for a second unit. He said that at the time when the value engineering was done to pull that second unit, that the actual structure that supports them was modified just to support the one. So we do have some finite, you know, parameters to work within.
Can we expect there'll be some technology improvements?
Absolutely.
In the, okay.
One of the things we want to look at is tying in a VFD, so that it exhausts at a variable rate.
Oh, like our other variable rate?
Our pumps right now are in a variable rate for water flow, but our air is either all on or all off, and some of the folks that are doing work with us in Wisconsin have seen some significant savings in terms of energy use, but also better air quality.
Yeah, we think so.
Because you can evacuate based upon some of the contaminants that are present in water that are indicators for the air quality as well.
Most of the systems today, or a new facility you go in today, will have means of taking the air that's at deck level and pulling it off and through the system, where we don't have that. So we'll be looking at, to see if there's any kind of adapt, way we could adapt it to work.
Is there, is there some air exchange system though, in the pillars of the benches and all that, or am I just dreaming that?
No, that's the air coming in, isn't it?
They got air.
Oh, is it? Okay, so there is, there is some piping in there already?
There's circulation, but not near.
Right, right, gotcha.
I mean, a lot of them these days have, at the gutters, they have a system that sucks air in.
Really?
That's where all the chlorine hangs out.
Wow, so this will be something that those of us who are going to Chicago can look at? Will there be, will there be people who are selling that sort of stuff there, do you think?
I've talked to them in years past, they will be there. Yeah, so for this system, it's called paddock. Paddock Evacuator.
Uh huh.
The VFD tie-in with the pool pack unit is by, I have to get back to you, I can send, I can give you the.
Yeah, but it'll be more fun running, looking for it.
Arc and Cersei installed those, where they draw the air off the floor of them.
Yeah.
So I think it's better air quality. I didn't think it was too bad to begin with, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't find the air, I mean, it was awfully hot in there last week, but it actually felt, felt nice. But I don't ever feel like you walk in and think, wah, I'm in a pool, like in the old days, where it'd just nearly knock you over, and the chlorine smell is seeping out the door.
Right.
Yeah, it's much, it's much better than the old days. Good.
I'll just mention one more thing. We worked to get electrical service brought to our dog park. That work was complete last week or two weeks ago. We'll be meeting with the locksmith in Champagne Park District later this week to discuss a potential option for access control at the site. Obviously, we're including Champagne Park District.
Oh, good thinking.
As part of that reciprocal agreement, to see if we both could kind of coordinate that together.
So would there be a tag with a?
Yeah, there's an option where you can have a car, a PFOB, and, yeah.
We've talked to number of park districts that have installed these, and also independent dog parks, and the members like it, because you have assurances that all the dogs that are present are members and have the necessary vaccinations, know the rules.
Right, right.
Have seen membership increase.
So if you have a guest dog, or you wanted to come and try it out, then what would you do?
Get a short-term pass at the Phillips.
Uh huh. Okay. I have to get a dog first, though. I was just curious.
So that's it?
Oh, that's good, nothing's broken. I mean, really, sometimes the news isn't very good, so it's nice to have it like that.
Okay, then we can move along to the Executive Director's Report.
Sure, a few things, let's see. Last week, we, Park District hosted the annual coalition meeting here last Thursday. It was very wonderful to have everybody here. Obviously, we went over our last year's highlights, we've done quite a bit. Some things, obviously, we're, Park District's probably more involved. Of the five strategic priorities, working in community engagement, youth development, and advocacy for. community engagement, youth development, and advocacy for families and youth are probably our, our key areas of contribution. Some of our highlights, obviously, participating in the walk is one. The racial taboo joint training we did with Champagne Park District staff. Our efforts in summer employment, both trying to attract and helping high schoolers and things try to apply and get jobs. The campus rec program, the C3 program. Also getting more attention around the state. More communities in other states are contacting to find out what's working and what's happening. Obviously, we're really happy about that, but there's still a lot of work to do. As you know, it's slow and hard work. There was a shooting just at the basketball game, you know, last week. So it's excited, we, we are, knowing the numbers have dropped. Obviously, when that happens, it sort of changes the equation pretty quick. But obviously, everybody's responding and doing the follow-up necessary. Included also plans, you may have seen in the report, some of our draft initiatives for 2018. Just to give you an idea of what we're involved in, there's not a lot of descriptive information there, but kind of talks about some of the key program. Lastly, I just want to remind us all, remember that coalition isn't a program. So it's not like the coalition's offering dance or basketball or things like that. That's our job. And so working with Corky's staff and Derek's staff, trying to make the parks more attractive, trying to get the word out, working with underrepresented populations, working in outreach are things, you know, we're geared up to do. So we've done a number of initiatives that are sort of, I'm going to say inside and outside of the coalition, but we're all working together. And I think one of the messages that keeps getting shared with other communities is being able to de-silo your services, where people are willing to work with the other agencies without the territory concern, or at least as much. We're all proud of what we do and well, how we do it, but trying to work, you know, beyond those borders. And I think that's where you see the success starting to mount up. So we're really pleased that we still have tremendous buy-in. Everybody's coming to the meetings. The larger monthly meeting with community members continues to grow. So I think we're in, in, I don't want to say good shape, but we're moving in the right direction to make sure we're, we're ahead of, of those challenges. Couple other things. We had the wonderful event at the Urbana Senior Club, Holiday Lunch Day. Corky and I and Janet enjoyed visiting with everybody. I was really impressed in talking with some of the people at our table at the longevity. People have been in the club longer than we've been employed at the Park District. Janet, myself, and Corky, and we've been around a while. So just hearing their stories of how vibrant and important the, the club is, is kind of, you know, exciting just to see how it's changed over the years. And they're still very, very committed and interested in, in being there and participating. Let's see. Tomorrow, we have the annual TIF and Enterprise Zone Annual Meetings at the city building. So we'll get more information on how they have been performing and some of the highlights. Just got the packet today in the mail, so I haven't had a chance to read it, but we'll look it over before tomorrow. Really pleased to announce the staff's portion of working with the Urbana Parks Foundation has been just very pleasing. I think we're all enjoying making contacts, putting, getting the information together. Right now, we're trying to really zero in on the message for Crystal Lake and what some of the cost will look like, and starting to make contacts with our Silent Phase folks. So we're just real pleased about that. Wonderful article in the News Gazette on our new sculpture that's at Meadowbrook. Hope you all saw it, King of the Prairie Town.
Yeah, thanks to Tom Kasich. That was.
It's wonderful. I think it's just something he liked and must have caught his eye because he followed up on it. As Derek and I were talking, we'd installed three other pieces that didn't really get, I mean, maybe there might have been a picture of the installation with the, kind of the staff portion or the artist, but kind of a, a feature article was real, real nice to see. Got a report back, pleased that we're getting follow-up reports. Urbana Police look, have been kind of scoping out and recommending some improvements at, that would have opened a lot on Greg Street, sort of behind the tracks, behind the cottage. Sort of a gathering space there. So in, on our regular meetings with Urbana Police, we talked about that. And they followed up today and said that they've been through that area and, and are, are aware of it and, and kind of keeping track there. So we're very pleased about that. I think in January of 2018, we'll be promoting, have an opportunity to promote the extended KRT portion that is a sort of a exploratory project in downtown Urbana. So obviously, trying to attract that group's attention and maybe even gain some lobbying support, both in Springfield and perhaps in DC, might be helpful to that project. Had a terrific staff holiday party at Urbana Boulders. Appreciate the planning committee that put that together. And thank you, Bob, for joining us and helping us.
I heard there was some spectacular climbing.
There was, and I've seen a picture of Ellen, Ellen up in the air, hanging from the rocks. So I think it was a novel location, and everybody seemed to have a really good time there. Let's see. I think it's in the report. There's no January study session. Just wanted to remind folks that. Conference is coming up. And I think anybody that is still interested, let us know if you haven't made arrangements. We're excited about that. And had a work session with the Up Deck planning team to look at proposed projects. There may be a report that will come from one of the commissioners, but staff really appreciates that. We enjoy that. Because getting ahead of that, knowing what we're doing, it's just great. Because you know, you can plan and prepare instead of, okay, what do we kind of month to month. So it gives us a bigger window to, to look at. Can answer any other questions if you have any about the report or anything else?
Well, the minutes from the Up Deck, or not the Up Deck, the, what is it?
I, yes. Our study group?
Study group.
Yes. I think we'll be forwarding you the proposed topics and some of the suggestions that were made. So we'll, yes, follow up on that. LaShonda wasn't able to meet us that day, and we said we could forward on the information.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Tim. Moving on to the president's report. As a reminder, in January, we're, we do not have a study session scheduled. So our next meeting will be January nine, when we hold the ever-popular semi-annual review of past executive session minutes and recordings and the action to release those.
I, I feel a little.
And beyond that, I'm not sure that there are any specific things that we know of at this point that will be on that agenda. So. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group, I believe, is meeting the first Friday in January. So I think we're done with those meetings for, for this calendar year and taking it up again in January. Is there anything to report from the policy study group?
We have not met.
Well, I'm hoping to get a meeting scheduled, LaShonda, now that you're kind of back up and moving, probably before our January board meeting, if possible. So I'll send an email out. Maybe we can try to get together whenever Meredith's back in town.
And our foundation representative, LaShonda?
I have not been to a meeting.
Right. And, and you did have a, you did have a note from.
A note from the doctor. Don't let that woman on that.
And likewise with the Up Deck planning study group?
Yes. We just, we carried on without her, hard as it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, and came up with some, some ideas. I think we're going to talk about finance. We're talking about at least one field trip for the Up Deck members, so they'd get a chance to get out and see. I think that's really important. I noted at the, the last Up Deck meeting, the woman I was sitting next to said, yeah, you know, when I went on that trip, I thought I knew a lot of parks in Urbana. There are lots of parks there I didn't know about. And I think even if you know that Weaver Park, for example, is a park to actually put your feet in it and walk around and get back in behind there and see the pond, or, you know, whatever it is, or the, the dog park way back there. It's, it's, it's just good. I, I think it gives people a, it enhances their sense of belonging to the Park District. It then increases their interest in the things we're trying to do. And I think it gives them a better scope of what we're doing. I think the other thing we talked about, too, was having representatives from different divisions come in and give a, a short report. One of the best appreciated by Up Deck talks last year was when Matt Balk came in and talked about his invasive work. I mean, people were, their chins were just dropping the more he talked. I mean, and it wasn't just what he was doing, because, and that's certainly impressive enough, but the fact that he was there, just, I mean, you know, he was so excited about, about his job. And, you know, most of us have no idea, you know, that he's out there hacking at Mulberry's Aldi or whatever it is that he's, you know, whatever other jobs that, that he's doing. And I think that, again, it expands people's view of what it takes to keep a park district growing. And especially when you've got a lot of, of wild areas to support and take care of as opposed to just, just mowing. But we talked about Rich and the, and the mowing guys coming in and talking about all their, all their field things. So I think, I mean, our, our goal is to, I, I, I think of it sort of as painless education. So if you make it, if you make it interesting enough so that they don't really realize that it's a sort of big dose of what we do and, and how we do it, it, it just, it makes it better all the way around. So that's, that's what we're aiming for. And I think we've got a good, good schedule planned through August, right?
Correct.
Through August. So, and this is a very good, I mean, we've said this in the last several years, but this is quite another excellent group. So we're looking forward to good ideas and, and good help from them. So providing them with good information and interesting stuff is, I think, really a top priority.
Okay. Ready to move on then? There was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to new business. And item A is action to approve ordinance 2017-14 abating the levy of property taxes on, for one of our bonds.
I'm going to just talk about the next two agenda items at the same time and then let you move on both of them individually. But this is kind of a follow-up to what I was talking about, about our bond payments this December that are, that we just made this week. But we made a promise to the taxpayers when we issued the bonds in 2010 and 2011, that we would use alternate sources of revenue to repay them. Those alternate sources of revenue are our recreation and museum fund levies versus the bond fund levy. So if we don't abate the bond fund levy, it will be levied, because that's the source that they turn to if your alternate, alternate source fails. And so since we have an alternate source and it's not failing, then it's our duty to pass these abatement ordinances so that the county doesn't levy in the bond fund for our big bond payments. They still levy for the GEO bonds, the rolling bonds that we issued last month, the 710,000, for the repayment of those bonds. But otherwise, they would be levying quite a bit more to cover the bond payments for these two big bonds. So we ask them each year not to do that.
Yeah, that'd be a bit of a blow then, right? Because then how would, since we've already passed all of our, all of our stuff for the, for the levy, then, I mean, if something.
The bond fund is kind of outside of the levy. So even though it's included in our levy, it is whatever it is. So.
So it would be a black, it wouldn't be an item that would affect the black box then?
Right, right.
Good. Oh, interesting. Not that I hope.
It just gets plugged in, depending on whatever your ordinances on file are.
Gotcha.
But if we didn't have these abatement ordinances, I think you'd have a lot of taxpayers angry at you because their rate in the bond fund would go.
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't be a black box. It would be a black eye.
Eye. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'd have a, and not only, not only that, but you'd really have broken their trust because.
Oh, yeah.
I think when you issued the, these bonds, you're really making a commitment to follow through with that. So.
Well, yeah, and you have to say what you said you were going to do.
And this is just, you know, the annual process that you go through to, to make sure you're still keeping your promises.
Mm-hmm. No, I have no objections. I was just thinking, I've been noticing the number of black boxes that have been appearing in the paper.
Yeah, ours is always first.
I mean, there was one, was it Ludlow or someplace around? It was a 29% increase?
I think we saw that one, too. Yeah.
Yeah. And I said, oh, well, they don't have Carl to have to fret about either. So there are lots of, there are lots of places that are having big numbers in the, in the black box. It's likely to be closer to what they're actually having to do, which doesn't make me really happy, but.
Hopefully, that means they have a lot of new growth in their communities, though, because a lot of those percentage increases mean that they're trying to bring on that new property.
Right.
So hopefully, that's the reason.
I would like to think so.
Right. Yeah, because we had to do that when we passed a referendum to increase our rate. So that would have been a voter decision to allow your rate to increase. So then you have to levy high to accept it. So there could be lots of reasons.
All right. So are you ready for the motion? Or do you need, do you have more to tell us?
Unless you have any questions, I'm, I'm done.
All right. Then I move, we approve ordinance, oh, I think I've missed one. Yes. Ordinance 2017-14 abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds Alternate Revenue Source Series 2010 Build America Bonds. Bonds.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this point? This requires a roll call vote. We'll begin at the right.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all four commissioners present voting. And do we likewise have a motion on 2017-15?
I move approval of ordinance 2017-15 abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds Alternative Revenue Source Series 2011A.
Second.
And that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Again, this requires a roll call vote. We'll begin at the left this time.
Aye.
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 And that also carries unanimously with all four commissioners voting in the affirmative. That brings us to action on resolution 2017-14 to amend the fiscal year 2018 annual compensation actions.
Katie, do you want to give us an update?
Yeah, the, I didn't think Alex needed to be here tonight to explain this because she wrote the memo that kind of briefly updated it. But in the process of learning about all of our options for health insurance, which we, you know, was a huge struggle for us this year, we also discovered that as part of the ACA regulations, that our opt-out incentive for those not participating in our health insurance plan was out of step. So we wanted the board to revise a mid-year. Normally, this is an action that the board takes on, in April each year to allow, to assign the amount of the opt-out incentive, and, which you did. And it was set at 50% of the premium for our base plan. But it turns out that we need to reduce that amount to be compliant with the ACA. And so the new updated amount is presented in the memo. It's $2,100 a year. Right now, we break that out into 26 equal payments. So that's probably what we'll continue to do. But, so that's why we're bringing this to you as an amendment to the actions that you already passed in May. We're asking you to update that.
And can you remind us how many individuals this is affecting?
I think there's 18 of our members that opt out.
And for them, it's going to be a big deal. I mean, it's quite a change.
I move that we approve resolution 2017-14 amending the FY18 annual compensation actions. Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Excuse me. Is there any further discussion?
I'll, I'll say, too, the opt-out amount, it's being reduced by about 50%. So it's $377 a month right now, and it's going to go down to $175 a month. So it is a big reduction in benefit. But I think overall, our benefit, our health insurance benefit went down also. So, you know, the benefit we're able to offer to staff is less than it was the year before. You know, staff are going to be expected to pay higher deductibles than they've ever been asked to pay. And they're being asked to contribute to the premiums for the plans, which they've never been asked to do for the base plan. So, you know, just overall, we've kind of just seen a decrease in our health insurance benefit across the board for those opting out and opting in. So it's kind of a bummer year.
No good news for anybody.
We're hoping to spend our efforts in the next year to figure out if we can find a better solution for the next year to, to how we can increase our benefits again and, you know, still offer a high-quality plan.
And I think it's fair to say that a fair amount of time was spent in the current year trying to get that done.
Thank you, Bob. Yes. A very fair amount of time.
We also hope there's maybe some traction nationally. Obviously, it's not just a local Urbana Park District concern. I think there's a general concern across the country right now.
I hope. I mean, there's, it's just ridiculous. It's just, sorry. I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay. And I think, oop, we do have a motion and, was it seconded?
I believe I did do that. I believe I did do that.
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
Oh, well, okay, we'll begin, we'll begin a, a roll call vote over to the right here. Aye.
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 Again, that carries unanimously with all four commissioners voting. Um, and we're now on to a review and potential acceptance of the annual priority projects report to go to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Right. As you all know, each year we do an update on what we know to be at least priorities for the park district and spend a lot of time with the report. Derek and Ellen are here tonight to give us some overview and answer any questions you might have.
Great, and I think in the past, Ellen's sort of gone through some of the accomplishments from the, the last year and I'll talk about any changes to the goals for the...
Yeah, we, we tag teamed this very well, I think. So, yeah, I'll just review, um, the, the, some of the accomplishments, um, and the successful, um, or the successes that the foundation has had. We, we review at, at the beginning, you know, how we plan these, you know, using the strategic plan, the big moves, uh, park and facility guidelines, goals and objectives, capital and improvement budget. That, you know, we go through all of that when, when staff look at these projects. We also review, um, the year's accomplishments. The meet and greet event, which happened in, in September, along with the jazz walk that happens at Meadowbrook Park, was very successful this year. It was really well-attended. Um, the feedback from the attendees, from the trustees, was very positive. Uh, we had the barn quilt unveiling, which was, you know, a real plus and made it that extra special event. Went a long way, I think, to giving, uh, the foundation some momentum this fall. Um, we had a wonderful gift from the WITS to support the Sculpture Garden and also the interpretive plan, which the parks, uh, the staff have worked on for many years, trying to come up with a really nice plan that, that would be attractive to donors. And found some traction with the WITS who really appreciate Meadowbrook Park. They walk it regularly and they, they truly love it. So they gave us a gift of $75,000, of which 25 went to help us purchase those sculptures and the other went to the interpretive program. So, um, we'll have a very nice entryway, uh, display that they're funding. That'll be off of Ray Street.
I might just jump in briefly, Ellen.
Sure.
That really shows the value of a document like this because we already had some of these priorities established. And when it came time for us to meet with the WITS and talk about some potential things for, for donors to give towards, we, we, we had these projects ready to go and, and they were very interested in supporting our highest needs.
Yeah, it really was a wonderful dialogue and being able to, to show something like this that they could really sink their teeth into and get excited about was a real positive step. So, um, the annual dinner, again, at the country club in Urbana, went very well. Uh, we had a wonderful announcement, had wonderful coverage in the news about the gift of land and the, the new park. So that was very exciting. And then, in addition, we received our first check from the proceeds of the farming of that area, which was just over $6,000. And that, of course, is gonna go into a fund that will help eventually develop the site into a really nice amenity for the community.
But not all of it?
Correct.
Oh, right.
Right, a portion of it is going into staffing for the foundation.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, it's proportional.
And so is this the portion, is this the, this is the...
UPD portion.
The to, this is, oh, this is just the UPD portion? Is this six?
I believe that's the total, but it is going to be, it is tracked in the, uh, foundation, in their report of what the proportional use of the funds is.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, United Way charitable giving to the foundation continues to go up every year, so we're making progress there. Um, it's a very nice way to, um, start having some sustained giving, hopefully, that'll support the undesigned things that the foundation does. So we can, uh, you know, use some of those funds for the actual marketing and other things that, to let people know what the foundation does. We have, um, an ongoing gift agreement with Phi Beta, or Gamma Phi Beta at the U of I. And so this year, we got a check for $1,000 through their fundraising efforts that they do with the sorority, which is very nice to, to, again, you know, establish those relationships and partnership. And, uh, the nature playscape was a big success this year. We opened that on Earth Day of 2017. We had 85 donors who gave, you know, over $71,000 to that project. And it was really a good partnership between the foundation and the park district to raise those funds. Um, the landscape project at the Wondell Sculpture Garden is going on with the support from Jeff and Charlotte Wondell. And then lastly, the Ambucks Club, um, has helped the, uh, Ambucks Park with a grant that they received from the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois. So those are the, the highlights of the accomplishments for this year.
Excellent. As far as like, you know, goals, targets for the coming year, um, a lot of this is, is very similar to last year. We still are, and, and what we did last year for the first time was we really restructured this memo around the, the anticipated three goals of the campaign, uh, youth scholarship, Crystal Lake Park, and, and the endowment. And so that's reflected in, in the body of this memo. Some of the changes, the more modest changes, uh, revolve around the, the other category. We call it unfunded priority projects. Uh, here, we added Weaver Park Trailhead Development, phased improvements. Currently, our capital budget as it reflected, or taking place in 2020, which should align well with our current study and availability of ITEP funds. But we are currently, uh, through, through work with the foundation and annual appeal, seeking donations for some more interim improvements. Uh, more of a, a basic chip and seal parking lot that will provide a more rustic amenity until we can get to 2020. So that's new on this document. Some other changes in land acquisition and looking closely at some of the, the projects we had on there, we felt like two should probably drop out. Uh, one of them is, uh, the formerly, there's the Ploomology property next to Meadowbrook Park. We understand that that's no longer an option. Is that, am I understanding correct? Tim there, yeah. And then Orchard Downs was another one that we, we dropped. We felt like that was really, you know, beyond the purview of the park district previously.
Just a, a comment on the Franklin Street properties. I mean, it, you got the biggest park in the, in the district saying, well, we want, we want to make it bigger. I think a, a, a more powerful hook. And, and the reality is, we're wanting to make a co, more coherent park situation where we don't have this big intrusion into the midst of it. It is, I, I don't think the, the major motivation is to get more acreage in Crystal Lake.
So I like, I like to modify that with that recommendation. Actually, one of the driving principles behind some of the Volstead's work and, and we were trying to avoid having those parks that were bisected. Otherwise, it's, it's a similar document to last year. Uh, I'm excited to keep working on it and, as I mentioned before, it's just been very useful. Oh, we, we did make another change, uh, under, uh, kind of our park interpretation. It, it was three installations, now we're down to two thanks to the WITS, so.
Right. Yeah, so that reflects their gift.
I had one other question about the Lomond Park. The existing park expansions. It says acquired lot, oh, acquire lots, okay. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, the, the, you may recall, the park district previously was looking at some, some properties that were available. And we think that there's still some wisdom in looking at that as a potential in acquisition. I wouldn't say it's a high priority, but if there were an opportunity, we'd certainly want to look at it.
Right, if, if the opportunity presented itself, absolutely.
And I guess I have a question about the, the youth scholarships. Um, is it indeed intended that this be an endowment fund? As it is, as it is labeled here?
I think...
We do have the, the, the green endowment now.
It's a, oh, what was it, green?
Quasi, yes.
Got you, okay. And so, and so, okay, yeah.
Right, that is, yeah.
I think our, our recommendation to you all is, you know, with, with the suggested revisions to, um, accept these priority projects to, to board under the, the foundation.
I do, I do have one question, just while we're, just to sort of poll the board. Under existing parks expansion, the second bullet point, under Phillips Rec Center, I was just gonna point out, you know, we've had that goal probably for well over 20 years, probably as long as I've been with the district and it, or just maybe about 23 years. Because at that time, when we were doing the Phillips site, we did acquire one of the adjacent houses. And it was more to get that basketball court to fit on that site. I think it really stemmed from that notion that if anything opened up, you know, we would, but we've never really pursued it. Obviously, we're not, it'd be a, a available lot. Is that a high priority for the board at this time? Is that something we would just keep on the list in case? I just thought if it was something that I would point out that was really a long-term, older goal that we haven't really had any success, we're not opposed to doing that. And I think we would try to pursue that, just as long as everyone understood you couldn't really expand the Phillips Center in a significant way. You know, you could expand your parking or outdoor play area. I just wanted to be sure while we're under review, if that's still a good priority. Again, staff's not opposed to it, it's just, really hasn't gained any traction and it's been around for over 20 years. Now, having said that, there's probably a number of sites...
Couple of properties there and they seem to have been improved upon recently. So I doubt they're gonna turn around and sell them cheap to us.
That's why I brought, I, you know, I've been looking at it and just wondered, you know, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want anyone to be concerned on the block. Um, it is a little different than some of the other, what I'd call edge parks. We're trying to work as pieces would become available, we would pursue.
Yeah, it would certainly be at the bottom of my list of, of places to...
I think the, uh, one of the ideas came from the 1985 downtown campus plans where that area was looked as a, perhaps a gateway park. And so it's a neat idea, it's just hasn't really had traction for a long time. Doesn't mean we couldn't pursue it if properties, you know, became available, but just, I'm sort of questioning the priority since we haven't had any traction.
Well, I think there are fewer families in that area. It's more, it's more of a student, it's becoming even more student-ish than when I lived over there.
Well, let me, let me just say that playground gets used.
It, it does.
Oh, yeah, I, I, but I don't know that it's so much kids in the neighborhood. So in that sense, it's not, it's not a neighborhood park. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't mean to imply that it's not used, but I don't think there's a huge population growth of kids in that neighborhood looking, that we would be looking to expand a playground
Right.
to, um, to take care of the kids in that neighborhood. And I don't know that there are other groups that are in, you know, whom we feel we need to provide more recreation space for in that neighborhood and in other areas, perhaps there's more.
Oh, I think one other thing could be is the Boneyard Creek Trail.
Right.
Between campus and downtown Urbana.
Right, right.
Because that's covered at that park.
Right, that's a good point, I suppose if you...
Plan uncover that to make, put a trail through there.
You might need more space.
Then we'd lose our parking lot.
Right. Now, obviously, you'd have to have open spaces available, but I get your point. Another option, we could get more updates from the city. You know, how do they view the entry into downtown? Is there a different focus now? We just really, I guess, would say we haven't really revisited this priority, we've just updated it. And that is a, that is a good point. If you were doing boneyard work, you might need more land. Certainly, you'd have to have available land. I just think we're also pointing out too, the houses have been improved along that block.
Yes, yeah.
So, um, just trying to be sensitive to everybody's interest.
I, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't mind if it, if it came off. I think that it's not unreasonable to take it off. There's, and there's nothing to stop us from...
We update this every year, too, so if there were...
Right, and if we wanted to put it back...
Movement, we certainly could add it back on.
Yeah.
I, I, when I was reviewing the report the second time, I just thought, you know, that one has been on for so long. But I would also point out, you know, we've talked about the former family Dickerson site at the King Park and we haven't really made traction. We did have some discussion with the owners, um, that were serious, um, at that time. Unfortunately, they had already purchased and started making improvements, so they were too far down that process. But said if we ever change our, our plans, we'll let you know. So anyway, I just want to bring it to your attention if anybody...
My sense would be to leave it on there. I, I thought the idea of some of these were if there's an individual donor or a family that, that something particularly tugs at their heart.
Correct.
That this is something that would be worth acquiring.
Right.
And, and taking it off the list, to me, doesn't help anything.
We have attracted properties at Franklin Street because they've been on a list and we were able to publicly say, you know, if it was available, we would pursue it without a surprise to anybody. And so I do like it for that reason, but anyway, I just thought I would ask since we're on it. And certainly keeping it on it, there's no harm in that. We just review it next year and see where we are. That's reasonable, too.
Yeah. What do you think? I think we keep it and just revisit it next year.
Okay, sounds good.
It's not really a high priority right now. Am I making my motion? Oh, you want to? I move that we accept him for the 2017 annual priority projects report to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Is there, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that carries unanimously, I think, with all four commissioners voting. Moving on to item E, to action to award additional services to Burns, Clancy and Associates for the Crystal Lake sediment basin project.
Derek was gonna update on the recent request.
I thought I might invite Andy to give a little background and then Michael had an email today that we like to talk a little bit more in depth about. So a little background first from Andy.
Yeah, um, in August, I think I've discussed before with the board, but MET, our project consultant for the sediment, tested the sediment at the Landscape Recycling Center in Urbana. At that time, found that the PAH concentrations lowered almost entirely across the board, but still remained, uh, higher than the tier-one levels. Um, that would negate, uh, the need to dispose it in a certified landfill site in Danville. So at that time, MET recommended to leave the sediment in its current location, retest again in summer of 2018. And then they believed that at that time, the levels will lower enough where we could, um, keep it onsite there. So, um, previously, the staff, UPD staff, city, um, were planning to utilize that sediment either as, um, fill material on the north slope of, of the hill or the southern slope. Derek and I met with, uh, the team out there in, in November and, um, it was agreed upon to instead, there's a northern deposit and a southern deposit, basically. In between those two deposits is a depression and then using the, the material to push in between to help fill that area. Even though this is gonna, you know, need some additional services, engineering services, it should realize future savings, um, for that project and the change to not eat, put it in northern or the southern and obviously not to send it to Danville, we'll see some savings from that. So additionally, in the sediment basin itself, you'll see a couple other tasks, um, included in the document there. And BCA proposes, uh, additional services, services to revise the existing lake outlet structure. Since the removal project concluded, we've been monitoring the lake levels, um, in the sediment basin itself. Obviously, with the summer drought, it was a little hard to, to gauge, um, if we were doing well on our levels. In October, we had some heavy rains. We noted that the, um, sediment basin wasn't maintaining an appropriate level, um, the way it's structured. The water actually should rise up if it's an overflow and then fall down into the middle. Um, in October, we actually documented on a couple occasions where the water had risen and it was actually leaking through, um, the outlet structure. So included in this proposal is redoing that outlet structure similar to the southeast corner of the lake. That was done, I believe, this spring.
What was done there is a, a stop log structure was put in. And that gives us more control over the water level, the exact same structure we put in Weaver Park. So we've had some success with it now. And, uh, it's, I think Chris Billing has, you know, looked at it numerous times. He's kind of conclusion, it's just a really old structure that we have in there. And we're better off putting in a, a newer structure that gives us more control.
So I think currently, the, the surrounding bank area of the basin was, is basically left unaddressed after that portion of the project. And, uh, as you'd see in the proposal from BCA, would benefit from erosion control and vegetation. So BCA is including in that proposal, uh, scope for, uh, design, some grading specs and construction observation within that portion of the bank surrounding the sediment basin itself, um, to help enhance water quality in that area and make sure we don't lose any of the... to help enhance water quality in that area and make sure we don't lose any of the benefits that we've gained from the previous removal project.
And on that note, I'm gonna pick up, Michael had emailed. He'd been curious about the, the cost. It seemed high. Some, some thousand five hundred dollars for engineering for the landscape work around the sediment basin. And also was inquiring whether a ten percent contingency, re-upping at a full ten percent at this point, the project is, is needed. On the latter, I, I think we could do less. I, I was looking at five percent, and, and that's about where we were when we first awarded the project, and it's a little bit lower. It, it, it'd be enough, you know, for, for, for most traditional engineering service if we had to, if we needed to do something more. If we needed to do, you know, a, a third outlet structure, it should be enough. So I think, I think reducing it to five percent would be reasonable. It may mean that we need to come back to you all if there is a, a need for bigger additional services, but I think it's certainly reasonable at this phase in the project. This project, I think you, you all are aware, has been very complicated, very involved and lengthy. And I was looking back through the contract documents with BCA, and when we first awarded this contract with them, the, the thought was, it was just gonna, we're gonna take the material out and take it to a landfill and be done with it.
Yeah.
And a lot has evolved since then, and thanks to the city's cooperation, we're, we're recognizing some significant savings. And I think what, what we're realizing now is that, you know, what was designed way back then has some limitations. The sediment that's at the landfill, you know, there's a whole slew of additional work associated with that. This new outlet structure is needed. On, on the landscape portion, what was planned by BCA was, 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 was basically nothing. They, they were hoping that we could cut back the brush, they could remove the sediment, and all would be good. But once we got the brush cut out and removed the sediment, what we're seeing are some very sheer walls, and we're seeing some erosion. And so we're concerned. We, we could postpone it until we get to the lake rehab project, but that, that's gonna be another year, and we're just concerned that we'll continue to see, see erosion along those steep walls, especially now that the, the brush is gone. And so, in truth, BCA's already put a little bit of work into this because we were worried, and so they've, they've looked at it some. But what they're recommending at this point is that we do develop a grading plan that we, which is absent from the current contract documents. Come back and reseed it with, with an appropriate native grass mix, use erosion fabric and, and the like. And so if it were just a seed project, that would certainly be high. But I think when we're asking them to do plans, that, that feels a little bit more correct. They'll also have some construction observation in there.
And is there actually enough room between the north edge of the Silk Basin and the, and the roadway to do much?
I think it may be where they end up doing a tilt, if you will, and, and we might, may lose a little bit of volume in the sediment basin, but, but we'll be able to get a more stable slope for planting. I think that's, that, I think some of what used to be, I think that's, that used to be more that the grade was, was lost through erosion and then sedimentation activities. But they do think that they could do some, make some improvements.
But this is, this is actual engineering for reworking the topology. It's not just for putting plantings in there and then specifying those. Yeah, okay.
Probably should have had a little bit more text in there, but that was proposed. Apologies.
It'll be tricky, I think, to keep as much volume and grade it. It'd be a good grading project for a class.
And this is, this is just the engineering part. There's gonna be a construction project.
Correct.
Right.
To go along with it at some point, yeah.
Yes.
So all, the original contract was authorized in August of two thousand sixteen. Included a scope of work totaling fifty-four thousand three hundred with a contingency of five thousand four hundred and thirty. Staff subsequently ordered additional service in the amount of thirty-two hundred to BCA, and that was for the outlet structure in the southeast corner of the lake there. So that, this request for additional engineering specifically includes thirty-seven hundred dollars for the modification of the sediment basin outlet, six thousand for the Urbana site sediment management at the Landscape Recycling Center, and then seventy-five hundred for the sediment basin shoreline work totaling seventeen thousand two hundred. That brings the total new contract to seventy-four thousand seven hundred. And then with a five percent contingency, that would be three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five on, on that. So funds are budgeted for the project. Capital budget, two thousand seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, and twelve with additional funds from the city of Urbana. Unless there are any other questions that Derek or I can.
All right, so are we ready for motion? Are you ready for?
We say five percent, or do we just say as additional services? Do we?
So would we change the total?
Normally, we, we used to say a percentage, shouldn't we?
Well, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Or doesn't matter.
As, as presented here this evening, so with the, the reduced contingency.
Yeah, right. So as, as opposed to with a contingency of, of five percent of seventy-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
It's the seventeen thousand two hundred for services and then retain, providing additionally a contingency of thirty-seven, thirty-five.
Correct.
All right, I, I'll, I'll be happy to suggest the motion. How much do you want? There's no money in the, in the yellow line here. So we award additional services to BCA for the sediment basin project.
So it's in the, in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred.
Plus five percent.
Plus five percent contingency.
Okay.
Three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five, if I calculated that correctly.
So it's twenty thousand nine hun, eight, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Is that right?
Well, I, I think it's better if you just do the seventeen thousand two hundred plus a five percent contingency, because we're not gonna pay them that unless we request additional activity on their part.
The ten percent is based on the initial work, not the seventeen.
All right, shall I start again? Well, I still would like to move to award additional services to BCA for the sediment basin project. Seventeen thousand two hundred dollars plus three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. A five percent, which is a five percent contingency.
Second.
Okay.
That was bold of you. You really screwed that up, no, man.
That's been moved and seconded, and is there any further discussion on this point? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that carries unanimously.
Just moves us to. Those considerable savings and where the material ends up, I think we'll more than pay for all of this, I mean, much more.
That'll be nice.
And we'll have a better sediment basin.
So we're, we're really hoping for volatile.
Yes, we are.
Yes, volatility is our friend.
Yes.
Moving on to a review of the annual board actions calendar, if there's.
Sorry, listing of monthly known activities. Obviously, there's month-to-month adjustments, schedule changes, but of the known, sort of the reoccurring regular.
Now, there's been some suggestion that we not hold a, a regular board meeting in July, which would mean some of this would have to be adapted either earlier or later.
Can we talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Would we be better under the next item, which is the actual schedule of the calendars? These were just the actions, but whatever the board would like to do is fine.
It would be very difficult to not approve the budget in July. I'm not even sure it'd be possible, and we, we're required to approve it by July thirty-first. So I don't know what the commissioners' schedules are for the month of July. I mean, we could push the meeting back to, towards the end of July more, you know, all the way even till the thirtieth, because I need to file it at the county by the thirty-first, but it'd be much more difficult to move it up into June because we're just not ready to move on the budget at that point in time.
Okay, you're gonna be done in June, so you're kind of a non.
No, I will be around for the June regular board meeting. I will not be around for the July. I will not be around in July.
In July, right. So July is off the calendar.
Well, it's off, off my calendar.
All right, so I'm leaving the thirteenth of July.
Of July.
And I won't be back till into August.
Well, we can work with that, because maybe we could just have the meeting before you leave. Even if it's not a regular Tuesday.
Yep.
It could be a Monday or whatever, because we can set that date, and I'll be ready then.
A special meeting just to do that? I mean, do we have to have?
Yes, we, we can have a special meeting, but we still have to have a public hearing.
Right, sure.
And like all these things, so we have to know what that date is well ahead of time. We can't just call a meeting forty-eight hours into it.
Right, right.
So as long as, you know, I would feel great if we could just pick whatever that meeting is when you guys are looking at the calendar as the next agenda item, just based on your travel schedule. But I wasn't sure what your schedule was, so, you know, even if we can move it up a day before you're leaving or the week before, that could work. It's just, usually we don't have a study session in July because of the holiday.
Right, right.
But it sounds like if you're not leaving till the thirteenth, it might work.
Right. So, I mean, and, and we wouldn't have to do anything else, so we could essentially have no July meeting with the exception.
Regular July meetings, according to this, is July ten.
So that can still just work as usual.
Okay, it is, it is, indeed.
That's so great.
But the idea was not just that there wouldn't be enough of us here. It was to give other people the freedom of July.
Yes, of, of course.
So if, if there aren't other things that have to be done, absolutely, then, then perhaps if we do just what needs to be done.
Yes.
But that's.
Would it be another option? Take a little time to figure out what we need to get done in July, look at our options, move it as close as we possibly can, to sort of figure out the calendar. I'm not sure if we can do all that tonight and be as accurate now and six months later. But, you know, we could approve this and amend that one meeting date later. Because that is our traditional schedule. That date might work. But if we could move it up any earlier to create freedom, flexibility, we certainly can look at that. We just have to sit down, literally get the calendar out, know what our tasks are, and count the days out that we need, and try to pinpoint a more specific day.
We don't know Meredith's summer schedule, or she wasn't really sure of it. Is that what I recall?
Right. So I think, obviously, you know, usually between five, we have a quorum. It's not an issue. But I think we'd wanna coordinate with everyone's schedule and try to figure out what.
Okay.
The trouble, the trouble with the.
If it's the earliest or the latest, one or the other.
Budget and appropriation ordinance is, it has to be publicly posted for thirty days before the public hearing. And if you go thirty days before that, you're in the beginning of June. And I mean, we're just finalizing those numbers. Like, there's not a way that I could push the thirty-day public review period into May because we don't have enough budget information in the very beginning of May to have that ordinance prepared.
Right, right.
So I'm just kind of stuck in July. I'm not sure that anybody's ever gonna get their wish of having a free July.
When the suggestion, we went back and discussed it, and July is probably one of the more problematic months because of that hearing, and.
Right, right.
If it might have been a different month, might have been easier to make adjustments.
But it's a relatively pro forma.
We could definitely have an agenda where it's like the only thing.
Right.
And then that would be fine.
And it, I mean, it's, you would, one would expect the meeting would be over in half an hour, right? I mean, it's.
Correct. I mean, it'd be a very brief discussion at the public hearing if anybody came, certainly.
And then you just move on the, on the ordinance and be done.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I mean, I think that's, that's a great idea, and there's no point in making life difficult to theoretically make life easier for somebody, so.
Right.
Well, I think historically, Michael's been on those months.
Yep.
So it's not something that's new.
Right, exactly.
The other thing that is always done in July is the executive session to destroy the minutes, but that could be pushed to June or August. There's no.
Yep, yep.
We just sort of pick a half-year point.
It just has to be done twice a year.
Right.
You know, I think it's supposed to be done every six months, but, you know, if.
If it went to seven, and then we, that was just our, our little blip in the schedule, that wouldn't be a problem.
Correct.
We could do it again in June.
That's right. Get back on track.
Yeah, before you go. You just have that. I think that's a great idea. Give Michael the treat of doing that again.
End of slate.
Wouldn't want to appear ungenerous to you, Michael. All right, anything?
Okay, so. Now, it is actually on our agenda to accept this calendar. We have the purview to modify it later, so I think we probably should go ahead and accept the calendar as presented here, and then we can make adaptations later.
Right.
Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
I move that we approve the board annual act, actions calendar for the meetings with the possible adjustment of July's meetings agenda.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries unanimously by voice vote. Brings us to comment, wait, there was no new business removed from the consent agenda, so it brings us to comments from commissioners.
I have a question about the Aquatics Assistant position. Is that a new created position or?
Part-time position.
Part-time position, new position?
Yeah, we had two shift managers who had been with us for seven years apiece that had left at the same time, going on to new careers. And so, in order to try and gain some consistency in our full-time staff and basically brand-new, fresh shift managers, this position will take the place of one of the shift managers, but also have more roles, but it is a part-time position.
Hmm, okay. So Aquatics Center does have a high turnover rate, according to the notes. Is it more, is it more like summer staff that, that's in and out, or?
I wouldn't say has a high turnover rate. It's more of just a seasonal job. You know, we hire, in the summertime, we have about a hundred and sixty-five part-time staff. Well, then they all go off to college or go to school. We're lucky to keep thirty, thirty-five of them for the indoor pool. And then you hire them all back in January. We start training. The cycle starts all over. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's more of what they're getting into by saying turnover rate because we are constantly training new classes, and the new class getting ready to happen in the next couple of weeks.
And Charles was there and moved on to the, on to Phillips. And he'd been there forever, and then, what's his name, went to the, to the police academy, and he also had been there. I mean, they're, they, I think Leslie's really good at, at training people, and, and they're, they're good at running the desk, and they stay there, and you see those same faces. Man, I'm there three days a week, and it's the same faces. Time after, at least at the Interpol, I can't speak.
The two staff that we lost, one was Mariah Manning. She's now a nurse. Tyler Darling, he's now a police officer for Champagne.
Oh.
Those two people were huge in training all of these new staff coming in. They're, they're doing classes at seven o'clock at night.
Right.
Saturday mid-afternoon.
Yeah.
I mean, so without them, then it's Jennifer and Leslie. And we don't have any of the other shift managers. That was never part of their territory. So the goal is to get somebody who works more closely with Jennifer and Leslie that we can build into, one, they're gonna do shift manager work, but they're also gonna take care of some of these other responsibilities while they're working.
Okay. I was just confused because in the notes it said turnover rate, and I'm like.
Right, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a.
Relative.
The people that you expect to go.
Some are long-term, some are shorter-term, but there's motion and movement.
It's a never-ending cycle as far as new classes and bringing new people.
Yeah, I think, I think Leslie's done a really exemplary, exemplary job in, in, in training those folks for the, with the, who are at the desk.
Was a loss, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll regain with new staff and build that longevity up.
I wanted to thank Derek for looking into the, into the, the tech difficulties at the pool so fast. I think you came up with a really good, a really good way to, to quantify what the problem is. And I think that's a great, yeah. Yeah, I mean, but you, you have to find a place to start, and that seems such a reasonable place to start. I don't know why they didn't think of them themselves, so I'm glad that you did it, and yes. So, thanks.
Any other commissioner comments? Well, hearing none, I think we've exhausted our agenda for the evening, and I will declare adjourned.